We can move the meeting at that point to the hospital, that's all. That's not funny.
You gotta laugh at this stuff.
I guess so.
I've had them for 15 years.
All right, shall we then? I think it's time. All right, we will. It's 1:30. We'll call to order the special meeting of the Fox Canyon GMA Board of Directors. Steve, would you lead us on the pledge?
Hand over the heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Killy, can we get a roll call, please?
Chair West.
Yes.
Director Bennett.
Yes.
Director Mobley.
Here.
Director Craven.
Here.
Director Terry.
Here.
All right. I gather with only one item on the agenda, there is no changes to the agenda, is that correct?
That's right.
All right. This is an opportunity for public comments. Anyone who wishes to make a comment on some item that is not on the agenda is welcome to come forward and do so now. Seeing none, we will move on to the regular agenda. Item number one is the proposed Los Postes Valley pumping allocation system.
Just, excuse me, just under board comment, which we jumped in, we just would make the comment that I'll be leaving at 2:30. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Kim Loeb, do you make staff? Am my mic not on?
I don't think those are on.
I don't think it's on.
No, it's closer.
Okay. Anyway, for those in here, I'm Kim Loeb, GMA staff, and just to give you a little bit of background on this item before we turn it over to the Los Postes users group representative for most of the meeting here. They've been working on an allocation system for several years, first presenting to your board back in April of 2015, the concept of what they were working on, and provided additional updates later that year. In January of 2016, your board directed that L-PUG worked with staff to develop an allocation system charter that would specify the roles and responsibilities that, between L-PUG and agency staff, and that was done so and finalized in April of 2016. And basically, that says that L-PUG would have the primary responsibility for developing a pumping allocation system in the Los Postes Valley basins with ad hoc stakeholder working groups and stakeholder committees, and they've been working on that since then. There were specific assumptions for sustainable yield that were developed, and with the recognition that ultimately the sustainable yield that would be implemented was that process that was being conducted with the, for preparation of the groundwater sustainability plan and review by the technical advisory group, and that's ongoing right now.
Could I just, could I just stop you right there real quick?
Sure.
Pardon these mics, or still, we're still just adjusting to them, new mics. So, basically, Los Postes didn't know for sure what the safe yield number was, so they plugged one in, so they could do the math, and they said that number will get changed as we, as we get better number, we'll plug in a new number. Is that a fair representation of what you were saying?
That's a fair representation. That number was, you know, run through the technical advisory group by your board, and there was pretty good feeling that that was a reasonable number from the information that we at least knew at that time. Yes, and then the recognition that number would, would be replaced ultimately. Where the allocation's really dividing it up, it's not the total amount of water.
It just strikes me as a healthy, potentially a healthy way to go for a number of situations where we don't have, we always are going, there's new data that could make it more refined and more refined. Thank you.
Absolutely. And there's management things that can be done to maybe increase the yield too, as we'll talk about other times and projects, of course. So, let's see. So anyway, so a white paper that really talked, was produced by L-PUG that listed out all the specific elements, or many of them, for the framework of the allocation system they were developing. They continued to have many, many working meetings, all their meetings were public and open to the stakeholders. We had a town hall meeting earlier in the year and in the evening at the Camaro City Hall, it was jointly with the GMA staff and L-PUG staff, and continuing to engage stakeholders. And then, most recently, based on stakeholder feedback, they've prepared an updated white paper that outlines the allocation system as they've brought it, to where they brought it to now, and that's what they're going to really get into the details of today. So that's, I'll keep my remarks brief, and at this point, I will introduce Jane Donlin Waters, who's chair of the Los Postes Users Group.
Thank you, Kim. Good afternoon, Chairman West and directors. I'm Jane Donlin Waters, the current chair of the Los Postes Users Group. We appreciate the opportunity to present our pumping allocation proposal for the Los Postes Basin to you today. As Kim mentioned, the allocation subcommittee of the Los Postes Users Group has invested many hours of discussion, negotiation, and compromise to develop this proposed pumping allocation system based on the specific characteristics of the Los Postes Basin. At each step, over the three year period, the subcommittee recommendations were presented to the users group, and were either accepted or sent back to the subcommittee for further refinement. This final version of the white paper reflects the consensus of the users group, with the exception of three recent subcommittee recommendations, which actually went to the voting panel to be accepted, and they were approved by the voting panel and are included in the white paper you have before you. That's not to say that they're not remaining concerns that will need to be addressed as the process moves forward. As Kim also mentioned, the goal of our charter with the GMA was the development of a draft ordinance for your consideration, but as we moved closer to finalizing the proposal, it became clear that developing that language would really take more resources than the L-PUG group has available to them. And so, we are recommending that that language be developed by the GMA staff, and we would be happy and hope to be able to work with them to ensure that the, the intent of the proposal is captured in that language, if that's the desire of your, your board. I'd like to recognize the subcommittee members for their commitment to seeing the proposal to completion, as well as to the stakeholders who have given their input that was considered by the subcommittee and really shapes the proposal that you have before you. Special thanks go to our elected chairperson of the subcommittee, Brian Bondi. His leadership abilities and his ability to keep the eye on, his eye on the bigger picture as details were being worked out was really quite amazing, and he did it with great integrity and professionalism. And, well, we also found out that he has an interesting skill of herding cats, so if anyone needs cats, herd it. Brian is your guy. So, with that, I will turn the podium over to Brian Bondi to review the details of the proposal for you.
Thank you, Jane. I have a bad back, so I can't bend over and pick the cats up, so all I can do is kick them. So, good afternoon. For the record, Brian Bondi, I am the contract groundwater manager for Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, and I have served as the committee chair for the L-PUG allocation process. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. Thank you, Kim, for teeing everything up. Our goals for today are fairly straightforward. We want to give you an update on the allocation plan proposal as it exists today. Describe the unresolved issues that we have, offer some thoughts on implementation, and then, of course, hear your feedback, your discussion, your direction, as well as any public input that has, may not have been captured in our process. I'll give a little background, some of it will be redundant, but perhaps to the benefit of those who may or may not be familiar with the work we've been doing. Give a summary of the plan, discuss those unresolved issues, again, the next steps, and any questions. So, a little history background. This is probably review for most of you, a little bit about L-PUG. We are a grassroots, if you will, stakeholder group that formed many, many years ago to discuss groundwater issues in the basin. Currently, we have approximately two-thirds of the basin pumping represented on average at our meetings. That fluctuates up and down depending on the meeting and who attends, but you can get a sense. Here are the participates in the group. We have all of the major water systems represented in L-PUG on a regular basis, so we have a good coverage in the basin. Being a self-organized group, at one point in time, we felt it would be helpful to organize ourselves, to describe and communicate to everybody how we do our business, particularly how we go about making decisions. Jane mentioned that we have a voting panel that's comprised of nine members that cover both sub-basins and a cross-section of water use, mutual water companies, agriculture, et cetera. We try and make all our decisions at the group level, but we do use committees to do work, and in the event that we cannot make consensus, we do use the voting panel to vote on items, and that's, was necessary on this last version of the white paper. One of the kit committees that we use, obviously, the allocation committee, you can see the membership here. We have growers, representatives of mutual water companies, and Cuyahoga, in my capacity, on the committee. So, a little bit of history. In 2014, we had our first discussions. Really, we started talking about allocations in response to the adoption of emergency ordinance. In 2015, the GMA board officially recognized our efforts to be working on an allocation plan and more or less delegated that task to us. That was further finalized with the charter, not the charter I was talking about a moment ago, but the charter between the GMA and L-PUG. In 2016, we presented our first version of the white paper. There were three issues that the board identified that we should work on with staff. I'll get into those in a minute. That was late, that was November or December 2016. Moving into 2017, February, between February and June, we've had 14 stakeholder meetings on allocations, almost weekly at some points we were meeting. Kim mentioned the town hall meeting that occurred in April. Prior to that, the GMA also did a very broad mailing to, I believe it was all agricultural parcels greater than five acres. Details don't matter. We did a mass mailing to, ahead of that town hall meeting, so we did reach out and connect with some new people that had not been plugged into the process. In spring, as you might imagine, we've had rapidly increasing stakeholder participation. There's also been the formation of a group that calls themselves the Los Postes Basin Water Rights Coalition. So, the point here is we've had a lot of new and increasing participation. And, of course, here today, we're going to describe the, the changes to the, well, the overall plan, but also the changes to the white paper that L-PUG approved here earlier this month. And, let's see here, mixed up. Okay, sorry. There we go. I don't know what's with this clicker, it doesn't respond very rapidly. Okay. I'm sorry, the last bullet. The, today, we'd like to give you the update and handoff. And by handoff, what, what we mean is we feel we're substantially complete on this work. The remaining items and the issues that we'll talk about, we feel are better handled with the GMA as the lead with input from L-PUG, including the ordinance itself. And, and we do recognize that our charter called for us to write an ordinance, and we have not done that. However, it's been necessary for us to spend our times in the meetings addressing the issues so that the ordinance ultimately, as it's developed, hopefully has the broadest agreement as possible. All right, so I'm gonna switch gears. Pumping allocation system goals. Before we started trying to figure out how to share the groundwater, we established some goals as a group. Felt this was very important to guide and have a backstop for what we were doing when we got into tough times. First and foremost, the allocation plan absolutely has to provide for sustainable groundwater management, and for us, this means managing within the safe field of the basin with consideration of any potential augmentation by projects. The users felt it was very important to design a plan that maximized certainty, particularly for their business planning. They wanted use flexibility in the water use over time. They wanted the plan, recognize the plan needs to be adaptable because there is uncertainty in the sustainable yield and groundwater conditions, and the plan needs to adjust with those changes. We also tried to respect groundwater rights principles as much as possible, but also minimize undue hardships. I'll explain what those two potential hardships were that we tried to address in a moment. And last, for Cuyahoga, it was important to make sure that we addressed pre-existing approvals and rights to store groundwater in the basin. So, two of our challenges. The first, I don't know what's going on with this, but as you can see in the, in the picture here, up on the hill, we have un-irrigated land, and you can see some that at some point in time have been brought into production. This is one characteristic of the Los Postes Basin that is different than the Oxnard Plain and Pleasant Valley. It's pretty much planted out down on the plain, but there are still opportunities for new planning in the Los Postes Valley. So, that's a challenge that we, we've had to, to address. And, so we are proposing in our plan to create a set aside, where we set aside part of the basin yield for future new uses. It's not intended to necessarily accommodate every new use that could possibly ever occur, but the existing groundwater users set aside what they felt is a reasonable amount to address some potential new use. So, that's how we're addressing one challenge. The other challenge that we have is, is our cropping patterns in the Los Postes Basin. We have a lot more permanent crops than perhaps in the other GMA basins, maybe not so much compared to Santa Rosa, but certainly compared to the Oxnard Plain and Pleasant Valley. And with that comes perhaps arguably a wider spread in irrigation demands than some other areas. And in particular, with that range, on the low end, there were concerns about addressing investments in efficiency. We have low-end water use down near an acre foot per acre for some crops in heavier soils in the western end of the basin, and so it was important to those entities that we put something in place that recognizes those investments in efficiency and protects those lower-end users. So, we've introduced a concept into our plan called a minimum allocation. The idea behind the minimum allocation is to create essentially some sort of floor for allocation for the low-end water users. I am really regretting doing all the animations with this. Our pumping allocation proposal, the core components are all the things that you would expect to see in an allocation plan, plus the custom, customized pieces that we put in in terms of the set aside for unexercised rights and the minimum allocations. We're gonna talk about all of these core components today. I do want to mention, though, that our white paper talks about things like stored water, basin replenishment, water markets, desalters, reporting, and transition plan. I'm not going to talk about those today in any detail, but I just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that the white paper touches on those items that the allocations need to integrate with in the GSP. So, going back to December, board meeting, the three issues that we were asked to work on, first was to address potential abuse of domestic allocations. The idea here was that we were proposing to provide two acre feet per year for domestic use per parcel. There had been some concern that there could be loopholes that would, would arise out of that definition. So, this is something that staff is primarily working on. I put a check mark up there, not necessarily because it's totally resolved, but mainly because it's not in L-PUG's list of things to do. It's more staff took that one on. The one that's crossed out here, approach for implementing penalties during the first five years. This one really doesn't apply anymore because we've changed our thinking about allocation, unused allocation carry forward. I'll talk about why in a moment. The last item was a variance process to address all of the unique circumstances that I'm sure you will hear about when we implement this, that could arise to a justifiable deviation from the plan. And so, we have written, it's an attachment to your, I believe it's an attachment to the board packet because it was part of the white paper. We have run this language through committee and L-PUG several rounds, and L-PUG did have a consensus on the language. So, this would be the process for addressing unique circumstances that may not fit in the core plan that we've laid out. I'm not gonna describe the variance process in detail today, it's there for your reference.
About the appeal process, the addition that I received cut off at section 2.4 appeals. Was there a recommendation out of the group with respect to the completion of that process, or are we just leaving that to the board?
Not a formal recommendation yet. What, where we were at was, we were going to look at the existing appeals language in the existing ordinance code and determine if there was any recommended changes to that. So, the intent was to use the existing unless there was a good reason to add or subtract. So, I talked about the three issues that came up in December, and where those stand. We have two new issues, two new issues that are unresolved. The first one has to do with carry forward, and what carry forward means is, is taking unused allocation from one year and bringing it forward to a subsequent year or years for future use. It's basically like the credit system we had before under historical allocation. The context here, though, is what limits on the carry forward would you have, recognizing that the, the conservation credit issue in the past perhaps got a little extended out. I'm sorry? Yeah. So, where were that? We were previously looking at an approach where we would say carry, unused allocation could be carried forward for up to five years. There's perhaps some basis for this in the water code sections that deal with Sigma. That language is not clear. We need clarity on, on that, whether the water code is really saying you can only carry forward five years or not. That's sort of an outstanding issue that needs some clarity. If it comes back that it is intended to be a rigid rule about carry forward, then our hands are tied, and we probably go back to a five-year limit. If it's not, or it's unclear, I think L-PUG's position is they would like to explore different carry forward models, and we know the Oxnard Plain Group is working on carry forward models, and there's some interest to, to work with them on, on this particular issue. So, that's where that issue stands. The second issue is considerably more challenging, and I'll explain it more in detail towards the end of the presentation, but it, it revolves around the question of whether pumping allocations are assigned to the well owner or land owner. And that may seem pretty fundamental, and it is, but I will share with you that the structure of our plan could work, depend, either way, depending on the answer to that. So, we've been able to move forward without resolution on that. Originally, L-PUG was pursuing a land-based system. The problem we ran into was disagreement between mutual water companies and some of the shareholders in the mutual water companies concerning the question of who owns the GMA allocation, which, if you kind of think that through, gets to this question of where you're assigning the allocation, to the land or to the pumper. So, that's really the issue that prevented us from moving to a land-based system, and so our default was to stay with the GMA's existing well-based system and propose that if there is a judgment or, or bylaws of a mutual are presented to the GMA that says it has to be done differently, then that could be recognized. That's sort of where we're at today, but there's still considerable disagreement on this issue, and it's something that I think L-PUG is gonna need the GMA's help sorting out moving forward before this is turned into the new rules, if you will. All right. So, I'm gonna go through the, the key features of the allocation plan now. The first is the geography of the, of the proposal. Sigma, GSP regulations provide the GMA or any GSA the authority to take a basin and create different areas within the basin to manage differentially. That could be based on geology, groundwater conditions, whatever, whatever makes sense. You have that authority. We at L-PUG are proposing three management areas based on the hydrogeology. We have three areas that are pretty much distinctly hydraulically isolated from each other, and I'll show you on a map. We have the west sub-basin, which has long been recognized, the east sub-basin, which has long been recognized, and then we have what's called the Fairview Eppworth And then, we have what's called the Fairview Upworth Aquifer, which is a small area within the eastern area that is vertically isolated from the rest of the groundwater system. So, we propose that we're developing one set of rules that could be applied to each management area. Just the numbers would be different. So, here's a map just showing the western area. This is Lewis-Somus Road coming up from Camarillo 118. So, just east of Bradley is kind of where the fault structure comes through, western-eastern, and then the small Fairview Upworth area is shown diagrammatically. So, in the Fairview area, we think pumping, current pumping and recent, not recent, but historical pumping for the last several decades is already sustainable. This graph is showing groundwater levels over time. You can see here, starting in the 90s, we've had several decades of rising groundwater levels, a little drop here in the current drought, but certainly that hasn't brought us down anywhere near the preceding historical low. So, we interpret that to mean that the pumping is in balance, actually more than in balance, that there's a surplus of water for this aquifer, given the current usage or recent historical usage over the last several decades. So, we would be proposing that allocations would be set up, but there would be no need at this time to reduce these groundwater users. So, we're sort of taking that management area and putting it off to the side here. The rest of the plan I'm going to talk about really is focused on the rest of the areas, west and east. In the western management area, groundwater levels have been generally stable if you look over climatic cycles. However, those trends, particularly in the eastern part of the basin, have been masked by historical groundwater storage activities by CAGUS. There was a period starting in the mid-'90s that went through the mid-2000s, about 12 years or so, where CAGUS delivered imported water, and certain entities agreed to turn their wells off. And that storage was credited to CAGUS as in-lose storage. I'm not really here today to talk about the storage program. The point is, the effect was of turning those wells off was a very notable rise in groundwater levels. You can't read the axis here, but this is over 100 feet of rise in groundwater levels because the pumping was turned off. Had that in-lose program not happened, we probably would have seen continued decreasing water levels.
And what year is that down at the bottom of that? Where it starts, where it starts at?
This is the mid-'90s. I think the first year was '95. And then, it goes for about a dozen.
I can see it on these things now better.
You can probably see it better because I don't have my glasses. So, the point here is there's been a masking effect. We interpret this, we have to filter this out of the analysis. When you filter that out of the analysis, the masking effect, and you see that water levels would have been going down, that translates into some amount of probably over-pumping in that area. In the eastern area, it's clearer. Although you may recall, five, six, seven, eight years ago, me making statements that the eastern area seems to be in balance. Well, that's when we were only looking at data from here to the left. As we've added more and more data, it's become clearer that there are a declining trend in many wells in the eastern part of the basin. So, in many areas, they're declining. In some areas, they're stable. But again, because of the storage activities, CAGUS actually injects water in this part of the basin. Some of those stable levels are again masked by the storage activities, so we have to filter that out of the analysis. That's what I've done in the numbers that, the planning numbers that we talked about, or Jane talked about. So, that sets the stage for the need for management in those areas. Getting back to the plan, the roadmap is pretty simple for allocations. You need a starting point. Oops. I'm just having all sorts of trouble with this today. You need a starting point, you need an endpoint, your sustainable yield. So, you need initial allocations to start, sustainable yield is your goal. Over some period, you're going to transition from your starting point to your ending point. Eventually, you'll be in a maintenance period where you may have to fine-tune, either with allocation changes or changes to replenishment projects. Pretty straightforward. So, I show eastern and western. Again, down here, this note, all it says is we don't need to reduce in the Upworth area. So, to look at this a little differently, I set up, and I'm going to run through a series of graphs where we're plotting on the vertical axis allocation and then implementation timeframe under Sigma. So, zero represents the start of implementation of the management measures in the GSP. So, for each management area, we have some amount of initial pumping allocation. We have some sustainable yield. We have to get from the first purple dot to the second purple dot. Pretty straightforward. What we have done for the purposes of dealing with some different issues between different types of users is we've created two pools. So, we've broken the purple dot, the management area, up into two pools. The first pool is comprised of the landowners and mutual water companies. The second pool is the Water Works districts. So, we have basically two pools, each with their initial allocation starting points. And when I say initial allocations, the sum of the initial allocations in those pools, they add up to the management area total. And same thing with the sustainable yield. They'll be reduced down, and you add them up, and you get to the sustainable yield for the management area. So, the next question becomes, how do you get from the start point to the goal? And there's different ways to do that. You can start more gently and go steeper later. You can start steeper and more gently later. You can have stair steps here I'm showing every five years, or you can go in a more linear fashion, which is what L-PUG is proposing, the black line. It was pointed out to me by somebody that it's really not perfectly linear. What we're really talking about are 21-year, 20 little steps, but I chose to just put a straight line. I think you get the point. So, L-PUG's proposing the more linear ramp-down approach. So, in terms of reductions, of course, that just looks like this. And you can see that the slopes are, it's the same percentage. The absolute value is different depending on your starting point. That's why the slopes look different. But on a percentage basis, it's the same. Within Pool One, I mentioned earlier, we introduced the concept of the minimum allocations to try and provide some assurance to the existing low-end, very efficient water users that they would have a level of protection. What that minimum allocation is based on is if you took all of the users in Pool One and figured out what their pro-rata share of the sustainable yield is, that's the minimum allocation. So, in theory, if we reach the sustainable yield, everybody will be at their pro-rata share. So, what that looks like for individual users is depending on your starting point, your ramp-down will have perhaps a different slope than your neighbor. So, entity number one is starting at a high initial allocation. It's going to end up at the same minimum as everybody else, so it's going to ramp down faster than entity two. Entity three is an entity that's starting at the minimum allocation. They were already one of those low-end water users, and they will start at and stay at the minimum allocation. If we get into a situation where the sustainable yield turns out to be lower than what is assumed when this plan is implemented, and we have reached the point where everybody's at their minimum allocations, then everybody will be reduced in Pool One at the same percentage basis moving forward. So, rolling this up and looking at it a little differently, here's the initial allocations for the two pools. Here, I've illustrated the unexercised rights set-aside where we have literally taken a chunk of the yield, excuse me, and truly set it aside for future uses. And the way you know that's happening is it's not getting reduced. It's the same size here as it is here. So, the existing users in Pool One are getting reduced to meet the overall reduction goal for Pool One, and same thing for Pool Two. In terms of how we are proposing to establish the initial allocations, we are proposing using one of three criteria. First would be to base it on a user's average pumping in a five-year period, 2009 through 13. At the point we started this process, that was the most recent five-year period. The reason we picked that is it's generally consistent with the approach that's used in adjudications. It's a recent multi-year period. We chose this period. More recently, we have added the second possible way of establishing initial allocations. That would be to look at just 2015 pumping. The reason we added that is because we had a number of folks who were very concerned that they were caught in transition in the '09 through '13 period. Maybe they had planted new trees, maybe they had replaced mature trees with young trees, maybe their well had gone down partway through this period. For whatever reason, their five-year period was not representative compared to what they were doing after that period. So, this was a compromise between those folks and the existing users. And hopefully, it addresses most of those transition issues. But again, we have the variance process for catching the things that aren't handled here. The third basis for initial allocations could be that it's the minimum. So, if you're a user who is very, very low water user, and your five-year average or your 2015 is below the minimum, you would get brought up to the minimum and stay there. So, the idea here is whichever one of these three gives the highest initial allocation, that would be what would be given to that entity. A little more definition on the minimum pumping allocations. We recognize three different types of users within Pool One. Agricultural groundwater users or pumpers are the largest group in that Pool One. We propose that the minimum allocation would be based on agricultural's cumulative share of the sustainable yield for the management area divided by the acreage. So, how much water is allocated to all the ag landowners, divide by the acreage, you get a number in the range of, using the planning numbers, 1.2 to 1.3 acre-feet-per-acre. We would propose for implementation that we would base the acreage on the reported 2014-15 IAI reporting. This was the first time the GMA required everybody in the ag community to report what acres the water was being applied to. So, we felt that this aligned as close as we could to the base period. Base period ended in '13. This was the first complete reporting. So, they don't overlap perfectly, but we felt this was the best we could do. For domestic users, small domestic water systems, I mentioned earlier, we're proposing two acre-feet-per-year per parcel. This aligns with, it's not the same thing as, but it aligns with Sigma's limit for de minimis extractors. What Sigma's saying there is basically if you use two acre-feet-per-year less and you're domestic, you don't have to meter. So, from our standpoint, it doesn't make sense to implement an allocation lower than two if they're not required to be metered. You can't measure it. The third group that we recognize in the Pool One, the landowner mutual pool, is everybody else. So, if you're not ag, you're not domestic, you're lumped in the others category. And for all of the folks in the others category, they had one thing in common. They all had a TEA under emergency ordinance E. And so, instead of looking at all the unique, specific characteristics of each type of user, whether it's a gravel mine, a larger domestic Crestview, or a golf course, or what have you, we just simply said, let's look at emergency ordinance ET, whatever the final reduced T is, that we would recognize that as the minimum allocation for these users and that we would recognize any variances that had been approved by staff or the board. In terms of determining the initial allocation, we've laid out the process. It's fairly straightforward. We would look at the base period average pumping or the 2015 pumping. If that pumping was, if I can get the slide back. If that pumping is zero, then that entity would be eligible to apply for allocation from our unexercised rights set-aside. If their base period or 2015 pumping is greater than zero, the next question we would ask, is it less than the minimum allocation? If it is, they would get raised up to the minimum allocation. If it's not, the answer would be no, and their allocation would be based on whichever was greater, the base period or 2015. In any case, coming off of any of these decision trees, anybody has the ability to propose that they have unique circumstances that aren't addressed by the allocation plan, in which case, they could apply for a variance to the GMA. And if they don't have unique circumstances, obviously, they're not applying for variance, or it won't get approved. Okay, a few notes on the set-aside. We get a lot of questions about the set-aside. Again, this is reserved for entities that have not exercised their rights in Pool One. We're pretty much talking about overlying groundwater rights. These are non-pumpers at this time, historically. We've proposed to reserve 320 acre-feet-per-year in the western management area, 670 in the eastern. We don't need to reserve anything in the Upworth because we believe it has a surplus. How did we get to the numbers? We did an evaluation looking at aerial photo and mapping. We mapped all of the 2014 IAI parcels that were reported. That's what you're seeing in green. We mapped out in purple all the areas served by M&amp;I providers. And then, over here in white, we have the city of Moore Park. So, we were able to really do two things here. First, we were looking to see if there was any concern about non-reporting. We pretty much filled in every parcel that we expected to have IAI reporting in the basin. I know that there are thoughts about unreported pumping on the Oxnard Plain. The reason I think we had virtually almost complete compliance in the Los Poses is we just have a lot of permanent crops, and there's a lot of stability in who's operating and reporting.
Could I ask a question, please?
Sure.
And in the Fairview Upworth area, is the boundary line a property line in each situation? And just, you know, I see that dotted oval. What I'm just want to be hopeful is that we're not going to have any boundary disputes in terms of whether you're in or out, because it's obviously going to be a very attractive area since it's not under the plan.
That's a great question. So, that is purposefully generic, and it's dotted to communicate that it's an uncertain boundary. We know where the Fairview Upworth Aquifer is based on where people have drilled and encountered it. We do believe it is a relatively isolated geologic formation based on its geologic characteristics. But could we draw a line today that says it's exactly here or not? No. So, what would happen is it's basically drill at your own risk. If it's there, it's there. If it's not, it's not. So, we know where it is based on where we have wells.
And we'll be able to tell from the drilling whether somebody is there or not there?
Yes, it's very diagnostic. It is considerably, it's hundreds of feet shallower than the Fox King and Aquifer, and the groundwater levels are approximately 450 feet higher than the Fox King and Aquifer.
We'll have to take that into consideration when we create our ordinance language, then.
Yes, you'll have to have some criteria for defining how we know.
Great, thank you.
So, back to the set-aside. What we did is we looked in the areas where there's unplanted land, principally along the edges of the basin. You see some white areas up here. There are some areas within the basin that are hills on a property that's shaded green that aren't planted, particularly in the eastern area. The western area is more gently sloping. And really, what we did is we looked at the practice of planting in adjacent properties, whether they're terracing or just going up the canyons or what have you. And we just simply assumed that if the property next door is doing it and making money, that it may be potentially feasible on a property that currently isn't planted. And we just simply tallied up the acreage in all of those areas. And we just simply tallied up the acreage in all of those areas and made a judgment call that we assumed that two-thirds of the acreage we identified could potentially be expected to come into play in the future. So we chose to set aside for two-thirds of the acres that we identified. We also looked at ag properties that are currently served by the Water Works districts, whether it's District One or 19. They do serve a considerable amount of ag water. And we made an assumption that 10% of those customers might decide in the future that they want to drill a well and exercise their overlying rights instead of buying water. In the western area, the parcels in District 19, these blue ones, are typically pretty small. So in the western area, we didn't really account for those. It was more in the eastern area where you see some of these larger blue parcels that are ag, that are served by District One. We felt some of those were the ones that would be more likely because there's economy of scale.
Brian, are the set asides cumulative or are they reallocated if unexercised?
We are proposing that we truly set aside those numbers that I mentioned and they're there and people can apply for allocation against that. And once it's been allocated, then it's basically done. Or the board could decide in the future if it wanted to take allocation from others and replenish.
But assuming you had no applications in the first three years, would the set aside during those three years be cumulative so that you'd have three times those allocations to disperse in year four? Or is each year's set aside reallocated if unexercised?
It's 320 acre-feet in the west one time. So as people apply.
So the credits, whatever you're going to call it.
And it's truly set aside. If it's not applied for and used, it wouldn't be pumped until it's issued. That's how we're proposing to do it. You know, there was discussion about, well, we shouldn't take it out of the other users until it's applied for. And at the end of the day, when you do the math, it becomes a fraction of a percent of each person's entity's allocation. And it just didn't make sense to make it that complicated. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
So we have some rules. You have to be in Pool One, basically, and you have to be in one of the priority classifications. I'll go through those in a minute. For ag, we felt it was important that your water use be less than the 50th percentile. What we didn't want to have happen is entities with large initial allocations applying for set aside for portions of their property that are already arguably in their portfolio, that they already have water. What we're trying to do here really is allocate water to truly previously unexercised rights holders. There's a vesting requirement that's proposed. We'd like to see that that water use be demonstrated for 10 years beneficially in order to vest that allocation. And during that vesting period, we would propose that that entity not be eligible to sell it in the water market. Users didn't want to set aside allocation to hopefully prevent litigation and just have it sold back to them. They didn't think that would be something they'd like to see happen. Failure to vest, obviously, the allocation would go back to the set aside for somebody else. Application, we previously were considering recommending that this have a time limit, but we have since, this is one of the changes that LPO voted on, we have since removed that time limit. We felt that there just shouldn't be a time limit. We don't know how long this is going to take to work through and we didn't artificially want to limit somebody from exercising their rights. Moving forward, we propose that the GMA review the set aside. We talk about five years, really only because we know there'll be five-year reviews, but certainly the GMA could review this at any time that it wants. What we're looking for in that review is not only is how the program working, but more specifically, how does it fit in with replenishment fees that may come into play later? The issuance of new allocation and fees to augment the basin, those two things kind of can work together and perhaps should. So we would encourage the GMA to be thinking about that as they do replenishment. The priorities for applying for set aside, we have four. And again, the whole idea behind the set aside is we've reserved allocation for unexercised rights. So we felt the highest priority would be for somebody who has started exercising their rights recently that previously wasn't. So that might be an entity that has recently put in a new well and started serving a demand that didn't exist in the base period. And I think we have a few of those in the basin. Closely related to that might be somebody who has a well permit that would be for a new well, that would serve a new water demand. They're a prospective new exerciser of their rights, if you will. We propose that they would be second in line. And the reason they're second in line is because they're not already exercising. The first priority folks are already doing that. The third priority would be similar to the second priority, except that they already have a water demand and it's being served by another water source. So we felt it was more important to address an entity that is looking to truly have a new water demand as opposed to an existing demand that's already being met by another source. The last priority would be a new water demand met by an existing well. So this would be, let's say you had 100 acres, you never planted that last 10. Now you decide that you want to plant the last 10. You would be applying for set aside for that 10 acres. We felt that's the lowest priority because that particular entity is already exercising the rights on that same piece of property. Advisory committee, and we proposed this at the last meeting, nothing's changed on this slide. We're basically proposing to sort of formalize LPOG's role in the GSP process. LPOG would like to have the ability to review and comment on GSP matters for staff and board consideration. This might operate something like a commission with advisory authority or perhaps more appropriately, advisory responsibility. Implementing, certainly, the GMA will probably need input on implementation of pumping allocations. That would be a big role. Certainly, other GSP aspects moving forward are in mind. We already are provided an opportunity on a first-pass review of well permits before staff finalizes their recommendations. So it's this sort of activity that we're envisioning. I won't enumerate everything. So, issues to resolve. The first issue is the carryover. And I think I already kind of got ahead of myself a little bit and covered this. Essentially, we have the question about what the water code means in terms of whether there's really a five-year limit or not. We need some answers on that. And then we'd like, if possible, if the water code isn't restrictive to five years, we'd like to consider other carryforward models before, certainly before any reductions in allocation are implemented. That would be good to have that model in place. The other issue here, the more difficult issue, again, we had initially sought to try and assign land allocations to the landowner. I briefly described the issue. Currently, we are looking to assign to the well owner unless this issue that I described can be resolved. And really, the issue has to do, again, with the mutual water companies asserting that allocations belong to them on behalf of their shareholders mutually and that those allocations should not be instead provided directly to landowners or shareholders, which is arguably what would happen if you allocated to the land. Of course, some of the landowners and shareholders within the mutuals are asserting essentially the opposite position, that the allocations really belong to them as landowners and that the mutual has just been operating them in trust or borrowing them, what have you. I'm sure others will put a finer point on this when I'm done. But regardless of the pumping history, so we have not cracked this nut. And we recognize that the answer may be different for different mutuals because each mutual has its own unique set of bylaws. There may be some mutuals, I think we have one in the basin, that the bylaws say it's holding the overlying rights in trust. And we have others where the bylaws don't say that. So there may not be one answer that covers every mutual. If there is, we'd like to find it. So for now, the best we could do is to propose to stick with allocating to the well owner and ask that the GMA, or essentially have the GMA subdivide a mutual's allocation in the event that it's presented with mutual water company bylaws that say that's how it should be, or if a judgment from a court is presented saying that's how it should be. This is really the only practical solution at this point in time we could offer that could potentially allow us to move forward despite this disagreement still being in play. So next steps, if the slide will advance. LPOG has a desire to understand replenishment options and costs. What we'd like to see, and certainly not necessarily have all definitively laid out because it's going to take quite some time to figure out implementation of replenishment, but I think your GSP probably will have something that looks something like this, where we have different implementation options, or at least we'll discuss these ahead of finalizing the GSP. I think what we're saying is basically, we'd kind of like to know where the sustainable yield is going to be after we account for what we're proposing as implementation in the GSP for replenishment. So, you know, is it option A, where we're going to go down a little bit and then have a nice replenishment project at a cost that everybody can get on board with and have a higher initial yield and a lower amount of reduction that we need to achieve? Are we going to have option B, that's maybe something in between? Or are we going to have no replenishment, option C, and we're going to have to reduce down to a lower target? We'd like to understand that before the reductions are initiated. So in order to get there, what we're proposing as a path forward, if the GMA decides that it wants to implement allocations before the GSP, I'm not sure whether that decision has been made or not, but if that is the world we're going to operate under, our proposal is to establish the initial allocations according to all the criteria that I described earlier and freeze them. So that's what this minus one year is representing. We're on a one-year schedule to finish the GSPs. So if that schedule sticks, what we're saying is if the GMA wants to do allocations now, let's set them up, set them at the initial, and freeze them. And we have some details in the plan about how we propose to manage in that first year. But essentially, you'd have your initial allocation to work with. During that first year, it would be our hope that through the planning process, we would find a new clicker. Is there a keyboard or something? That in the first year, we would identify what the management strategy is going to be that we're working towards in implementation under GSP. That would tell us what our final yield target is, not necessarily what the final yield is. That's still going to be uncertain and have to be addressed over the 20 years. But we're going to have a plan. We're going to say this is where we think we're going with replenishment and so on and so forth. And set, once we can set our target yield, we can set our target reductions and then implement reductions basically at that point in time, which would be essentially when the GSP is close to being done or done, depending on the timing. So that's what we're proposing at this point. So just to summarize, path forward, certainly, we want to address any concerns, questions you or staff have. We certainly want to resolve the carryforward question. We definitely need to determine what the best solution is for the question of who owns the allocation in the case of mutuals and the landowners within the mutual. We could consider, or the board could consider, our recommendation to establish initial allocations and freeze them and then implement the reductions basically when the GSP is ready or close to ready. And initiate those reductions concurrently with the GSP. And lastly, moving forward in implementation, to provide that certainty that's important to the landowners and others, we would propose that if it's necessary to adjust the yield during implementation, that it not be done any more frequently than every five years when there's a five-year review. So the idea would be we do the five-year review. If we find that we're not on the path that we laid out to sustainability, as I showed in the earlier slide, and there's going to be an adjustment that's needed, we'd like to see that phased in over the following five years. So we want to have some predictability for five years at a time. If that can be incorporated and not put the basin at a material risk for not meeting its goals, we think that would be very helpful from a business planning and flexibility standpoint. I think with that, certainly happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
If I could, appreciate the opportunity to offer a few things as I'm getting ready to leave. The first thing I'd just like to mention is we tape all of this, video recorded and archived. Anybody can look at it and I will look at the rest of this hearing. So my apologies to anybody who's going to make comments and I won't be here to hear them, but I will take this all in. One of the most important things that I work on is Fox Canyon. Second, I just want to compliment the Los Poses users group. I certainly have been somebody who has challenged you from time to time. But the idea of having the stakeholders come up with a recommendation is just, it's demonstrated the advantages of that in terms of the things that you've thought through and, you know, reaching some kind of consensus and having people feel some sense of ownership of it. You've had a very open and public process that's been out there for a long period of time, and it's been a very effortful process. I couldn't come up with a better word than effortful, but you've worked hard at this, right? So I just want to compliment that and I think that's something that we should all consider as we get to the point of actually having to make the hard decisions, is we should consider that credibility goes to the people that have been doing the work. Everybody has the right to enter, you know, enter comments into the process, but you certainly have to give some additional credibility to people that have been out there doing the work, one. Two, I think your well owner solution strikes me as the appropriate one for GMA because I don't think we should get involved in the mutual and landowner dispute. We just say, we're giving this allocation to this well owner. You guys have to figure out who really is the well owner, you know? And if it's the mutual, that's something that I think we should as much as possible leave to them and have that be determined at their level. The third thing, the phasing in, not everybody necessarily is going to be comfortable with that who really wants to go to sustainability, but I recognize that it just makes sense to phase these cuts in. I mean, to have drastic cuts to hit everybody at one time is not the way for us to have it either be economically sound or for people to buy in and go, hey, this is reasonable as we go forward. That being said, the two areas that you presented that I have the greatest concerns on that I'd like to just keep exploring. Your hypothetical, your use of a hypothetical replenishment project and building that new number in and then saying, well, we don't have to cut because we think in 15 years we're going to have this replenishment project out there, concerns me. I think there's going to be a lot of incentive to hypothetically build things in and try to avoid those cuts. And so I don't know what I think about it, first time I've actually heard of this, but it's, I have concerns. And the other one is the carryforward. I mean, I made that wisecrack, but I mean, 600,000 acres of credits that we have on Fox Canyon and everybody knows it's become a pipe dream. I just, I think you want to find something that encourages people not to pump just because they're going to lose it, not to have to use it or lose it, but it's got to phase out fairly quickly or else you just get an unreasonable number. So, you know, it reminds me, the experience I have is at Lake Acetus, you know, people wanted to store water in the lake. Well, you could store, over time, you could store more water in the lake than the lake can actually hold. I mean, on I mean, on paper, you could easily have 400,000 acre-feet of water stored in Lake Acetus, and it only holds 200,000 acre-feet of water. At some point in time, we can store and it not actually be, because so part of what we should, I think I want to turn to the experts, and part of what is sustainable is going, just because if you didn't use it, some part of it may not be available five years from now, just for whatever reason, and I don't know what that is. So I don't have any technical answers to that or even any long, except those are the two areas of concern. And again, I appreciate the good efforts of the Los Poses group for doing this and the good efforts of staff in terms of staffing them and trying to give them, you know, honest, direct feedback so that they wrestle with the hard questions and the work of the board. I look forward to the next step here and whatever the board decides to do here. Thank you very much, Mr. West.
I want to echo Supervisor Bennett's comments with respect to the appreciation for the work that's gone into this. Having watched the evolution of the white paper and of the committee, the allocation committee's work, it's more than impressive that the end result is superior to what I anticipated, and I think there's a lot of worthy, not just effort, but a lot of good ideas and a path forward, at least as far as developing the GSP. Any other comments or questions by the board before we open it to the public?
I have a couple of questions. And I'm sorry, when the full agenda packet came out, it came to my Hotmail address, and something's happened in the last three days. I wasn't, I'm not able to open anything on Hotmail, so I didn't read whatever came out after this was mailed to me. If what I'm asking is in there, tell me, and I'll go home and ask Keely to send it to my other address. But I'm on page seven where it talks about the allocation pools and sustainable yield apportionment, and it talks about the landowners and mutual water companies and then the Water Works districts. And I'm going to go ahead and read it so everybody who isn't on this page or doesn't have it in front of them will know exactly what it is I'm asking about. It says, "Two pools are depicted in Figure Three. The sustainable yield is apportioned to each pool according to base period pumping, reported pumping during the calendar years 2009 through 15. For example, the Ventura County Water Works District's base pumping period in the eastern management area?"
Correct.
Area. I'm not really good at acronyms, so if I'm wrong on some of these, correct me. Was 14% of the total. Therefore, Ventura County Water Works District receives 14% of the eastern management area sustainable yield. I guess when the two groups were divided, there was, part of this time from 2009 to 2015 was the time when we had the drought. I don't know if we're still in the drought or out of the drought, but part of that time we were in the drought that we've tried to deal with for a few years. And there was charts a while back about how some of the users met their goals and some didn't. So in the goals for reduction during that period, how was it that these two groups compared to meeting their reduction goals?
That's a great question, but it's unfortunate there's a typo on page seven. The base period is 2009 through 13, not 2009 through 15. So the question really goes away because the goals hadn't been established in 13.
Okay.
So I apologize for the typo.
I was going by what it said.
Yeah.
Over on page nine, it talks about the initial allocations, and it says that it's going to be the greater of the following, and there are three ways that the allocation, or that the, yeah, the allocation can be determined. So that's by well or by parcel or what?
It is based on wells. Now, the GMA has had a practice of grouping wells in accounts, and so we don't propose to change that. So the answer is by well.
So that would be the way it is now?
Yes.
Thank you. Let me see if I have any questions, and then I do have a comment. The one thing that I'm still concerned, that I am concerned about is the carryover, as Steve said. I think that's gotten us in a lot of trouble, and so if what you're proposing is to, if it's okay with the law, to have the carryover go for more than five years, I think we're going to have a lot of long, hard discussions on that because I don't think they can go on forever. I think that's gotten us into a lot of trouble. We obviously can't let everybody have what they have. We're going to have to find a way to deal with it.
Yeah, I don't want to turn this meeting into a...
Right. I just wanted to get that out there. I've had times in the past, not necessarily here, but at other places, where I haven't brought things up that were a concern to me, and people, when I did bring them up, said, "Well, you never said anything before. We thought it was all okay." So I just want to get that on the table, that I too am concerned about that. And then finally, a general question. This has been approved by the committee, the LPG committee, the voting committee. How did it go over at your public outreach meetings? How many people did you have come to the public outreach meetings? Are we going to have a lot of people here opposing it whenever we get around to...
Okay, so...
Talking about an ordinance.
Sure, sure. So LPG's, there's LPG, and then there's the allocation committee that rolls up its sleeve and does all the work. The allocation committee meetings in this year have been frequently attended by, let's say, two dozen to three dozen-ish people. LPG typically has more, on the order of, say, 40 to 50 people. Again, that may seem like a small amount of people, but because a lot of folks represent different businesses or are part of a mutual, we collectively have about two-thirds of the pumping represented in most of the time. There are, it's not an even distribution in the basin. We have a lot of entities that use a lot of water, so there are a number of smaller users that aren't participating that may not be as engaged and may come into the process. And we do have, and I've been in full disclosure on this, we do have a legitimate dispute on the issue that I described, and there are people here today that I expect to speak on it and continue to speak on it. Hopefully that gives you the perspective that you're looking for.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Anything else? Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
All right. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Director West, Chair West, and committee members, and some of my comments since Supervisor Bennett indicated he would be watching the video or partly going to be directed to him. By way of introduction and partly in answer to your question, Director Craven, I'm counsel along with Mr. Alajam, who is Water Rights Specialist Counsel in Sacramento for a group called the Los Poses Basin Water Rights Coalition, and I appreciate my friend Brian including that in his slide. By way of answering your question, our membership at this point in time includes at least one mutual, all of the industrial users within the Los Poses basin, a number of agricultural users. And by way of quantification, right now, the group that I represent is about 4,500 acres. To put that in perspective, and I asked Kathleen yesterday, just so I could give you this information, the LPG communication to the county has been, there's a total in the basin of about 21,000 acres. So right now, we're 4,500, give or take, out of the 21,000, about 20, 21, 22%. I will tell you that in addition to the folks who have actually formally joined the group, we have about another 1,500-plus acres that are advising they want to join as this has evolved. So when all said and done, I would expect that the group that I'm speaking for now, and some of whom I'm sure you will hear for individually, from individually, are going to be 28, almost 30% of all the acreage in the basin. You should also know that my clients are not newcomers to the process. Mr. Bondi put up a slide identifying folks that he thinks have, by big name, have participated. They're in my group. They're in the group of the Water Rights Coalition. And this has evolved by way of political explanation from what has started to unfold in LPG. And while I appreciate all the good effort of Brian, and I'll talk about some of the issues, but there are fundamental issues that are not being addressed by the LPG voting panel. And if you look at the LPG voting panel, it is effectively controlled by several mutuals. And by that I mean, for example, Cuyagus is a voting member, though they will tell you they're not a pumper, that a member of the Board of Cuyagus is a member of the voting panel. And so there are these sort of overlapping interests where, when you hear from the LPG voting panel, what you're hearing from, at least in my view, is this very small group around controlling water rights in the basin, and that's going to create political issues and problems as this goes forward. And I want to talk about very candidly and honestly what those are so you can at least be aware of them, you're not blindsided by them, and think about a methodology where they can be resolved. Fundamentally, up to this point in time, one of the historic positions of the Board, your Board, has been that it sort of deals with all of the GMA collectively. So for example, if you look at emergency ordinance E, it's for all of GMA, and there was no parsing out of particular basins. At the time emergency ordinance E was implemented, for example, the hydrological data is pretty clear that the Los Poses basin, and I'll talk about that in a second, wasn't in overdraft. So I could stand here as a lawyer and say to you, there was no legal basis for that. It is what it is. My group's willing to live with it as we move through this process to get to ultimately a groundwater sustainability plan, and it's our view, and I hope yours, that rather than in the past, sort of broad ordinances that apply to everybody within GMA, there really are going to be focused basin plans because Los Poses basin is quite different hydrologically from any other basin in the GMA. Now, in that regard, and you heard some hydrological data from my friend Brian today, I will tell you that that hydrological data where he suggests that the Los Poses basin may be in overdraft is not data that I've seen or I'm aware of him presenting to the technical advisory group. It's not data that has been posted on the Cuyagus website unless it went up in the last couple of days. And I will tell you very honestly that when I started reaching out to Brian as the facilitator for this process to get data, to understand any issues, and give them to our hydrologist as well as make sure it was fundamentally provided to your tag and DUDAC, your consultants, I got a lawyer letter. And it was a lawyer letter from Cuyagus that said, "Mr. Bondi is my consultant. You're not authorized to talk to him. He's working for me, the lawyer for Cuyagus." And now the position of Cuyagus has been for us, us meaning anybody in my group, whether it's coming from me or anybody in this process, to get technical data or information. They want a formal Public Records Act request, and then they'll respond and do course and all of that sort of thing. So I really want to give you a sense about what's going on in response to Director Craven's inquiry of what does this look like going forward around fundamentally the question of where we go from here. The second thing I want to tell you is that your tag and your consultant, DUDAC, certainly at the last tag meeting that I attended, have made a very clear analysis, and in fact, Mr. Bondi said it, that the Los Poses basins are not in overdraft. They are simply not in overdraft. There may be a number of reasons as to why Mr. Bondi didn't present then, and he certainly has not presented any hydrological data that it's based upon Cuyagus's pumping, which I'll talk about in a second, but he hasn't said that. But at the end of the day, the why doesn't matter. As we stand here today around where we go forward, the Los Poses basins are not in overdraft. So while there may be other issues pertaining to Oxnard, or there may be other issues to Pleasant Valley, the basin, in the Los Poses basin, is hydrologically static, basically, and any number of folks in this room can tell you that their wells are better than they have been. The other thing you need to know is that from a hydrological perspective, there are two aquifers, basically, in the Los Poses basin, setting aside the Upworth one. There's the Fox Canyon one, and that's the one Mr. Bondi's been talking to you about. But there's a deeper aquifer, which is the Grimes Aquifer, and your technical advisory group's data says, among other things, they have little, if any, information on the Grimes Aquifer. They have not clarity on all of that, but that the Fox Canyon and the Grimes Aquifers don't communicate in any material way hydrologically, and neither of them communicate in a material way hydrologically with any other basin. So we don't have the flow down to Pleasant Valley, down to Oxnard, by way of example. So there's a lot of data that is not there, but more fundamentally, the data we have is that there's no urgency or emergency around Los Poses. And I will tell you, among our group, I have clients in this group who have wells in Grimes Canyon will tell you when they access that, the hydrostatic pressure pushes the water up, the water pipe. So that, at least anecdotally, would indicate that the Grimes Aquifer is anything other than hydrologically challenged. So now let's turn to the LPG plan because I want to be clear that it's not my position, and I don't think it's the position of the group consensually that I'm speaking for, that it's not a good place to start. It has a number of fundamental issues that I want to, at least some of which I want to talk about, but it, this is not about saying we don't have a way forward with this plan. It's about, there needs to be some discussion about some of the knotty issues in the context of the larger resolution of the issue. So, one, let's be clear. The LPG plan, the way it's written, strips water rights. They tell you in the plan, we don't want to affect water rights, but it does strip water rights. And here's the example. If I have legal water rights of 100 acre-feet, but under the LPG plan, I'm only getting an allocation of 50, and I can only access my 50... getting an allocation of fifty, and I can only access my fifty, and by ordinance of this body, I would be limited to fifty, that's a water rights taking. And the effort to suggest otherwise really is just simply not honest around the truth of what this is. And that goes to fundamental issues of who owns the water rights. By way of example, if you assume a mutual would have shares that would relate to the irrigated acreage, then here's the conversation. Someone owns acreage in a mutual, they have shares that give them a hundred acre feet. That person says, "I don't want to deal with you, Mr. Mutual, anymore. I want to spend a million dollars, drill my own well, have my hundred acre feet because that's what I've been using, so that's fair. And you, Mr. Mutual, are now reduced by a hundred acre feet because there should never be double dipping." Some mutuals agree to that, and some mutuals say, "No, it's ours. You can't have it." So, that eliminates water rights to the fee owner, but the fee owner owns the water rights. And absent there being some legal document otherwise, that can't happen. I will tell you that at least one major mutual that is involved in this voting panel takes the position that, yeah, you can drill your well, you can access your legal fee owner water rights, and we get to keep our historic allocation, thus a double dipping. And that's not something we would support, but that's one of the mutual positions that's embedded in this LPUG plan and is not being made clear to you. So, at the end of the day, how this unfolds does affect water rights, and that has to be very carefully handled. Let me give you another example, which is particularly troubling and really kind of ties back to what was alluded to by Mr. Bondi in his presentation and the issues of Cuyahoga. Water rights law says that, people commonly say water rights law is use it or lose it. That's not the law. I'll give you an example. There are, within the water rights law, what are called in lieu rights. So, I have the right to take out a hundred acre feet, but I'm a good steward of my water. I'm a good steward. I put a lot of money into capital improvements and managing water properly, and I'm only taking fifty, with the idea that down the road, I've got that money in the bank. I can access that. And your structure, under emergency ordinance, acknowledged that. That's why the people in this room previously would get a statement every six months, and it would say, "Here are your rights. Here's what you've used. Are you ahead or below?" And if you used less than what your rights were, they added to your water in the bank, so to speak. That was consistent with California law. LPUG's plan strips all-in-lieu rights. It says to, for example, one participant or two participants in the group, even though you paid for water rights and banked them so that you would have them in the future, or even though you had the right to a hundred acre feet and only used a hundred because you spent a million dollars on capital improvements and are doing the best business practices, those are all off the table. They're gone. That's what the LPUG plan says. That's a stripping of water rights, and in lawyer land, that's not permissible under Sigma, and it's going to create a whole hornet's nest of problems. There's a reason, by the way, why that happens, and perhaps at the risk of having arrows thrown at me. The answer is, by stripping the in-lieu rights, that leaves this amorphous amount of water in the basin. And Cuyahoga wants that because it makes the claim that it put water in the basin. It doesn't know where it went. There's no hydrological tracing of its water, that it even stayed there. And by stripping in-lieu rights, Cuyahoga now makes claim to the delta between sustainable yield and some amount over that. And that's why, at least in my view, and I'm saying it publicly, so there's no secret about it, that's why Cuyahoga's been paying Mr. Bondi, that's why all the meetings happening in Cuyahoga's office, that's why Cuyahoga's a voting member of LPUG, and that's why Mr. Bondi and Cuyahoga want to continue to be involved in this process. So, there's a fundamental political thing that's going on that eliminates water rights of people in this room and otherwise for the benefit of what I would call an eight-hundred-pound gorilla, which is not permissible. Now, all that being said, there is a political conversation to be had. And the political conversation is, everybody's on a boat, and everybody's got to find a way to live on this boat among these competing claims. And Sigma says, "You have a toolbox around what this boat is going to look like going forward." And the toolbox has a lot of different pieces to it. One is an allocation plan. One is bringing in state water when it's available and replenishing the basin. One are stormwater retention basins. There's a whole host of alternatives. And Sigma says to you, in developing a GSP, "You bring all those tools to the toolbox." And then, answering Supervisor Bennett, what your GSP says is, "Here are our tools. Here's the analysis, and we're going to do these certain things, and this is how they're going to affect the groundwater, and then we're going to measure it every five years and make adjustments." That's what Sigma says is supposed to happen. So, I went to certain of the folks who are in disagreement with some of the things I'm saying, what I call, for lack of a better word, the folks who are perfectly fine on only having an allocation plan. Some of the folks in this room and involved in the LPUG look at this allocation plan from a parochial perspective, and they go, "If no replenishment fees are ever imposed, nothing is ever done, how does that affect me?" And I, that's okay. That's in ownership of water rights. It doesn't offend me personally. But they look at it, and they say, "I'm okay." And I said to them around this conversation, I said, "What's going to happen when we're now sitting and talking about a GSP that has basin replenishment projects? And the question's going to be, are you going to be supportive of ten bucks an acre or twenty bucks an acre, or whatever that number is, for the collective good?" And the answer, very honestly to me, from some of the major players in LPUG, was, "We're not going to be supportive. We're okay under the allocation plan." And I said, "Well, wait a minute. An allocation plan is just one of the tools in the toolbox, and if we're all on the boat together, you're defining haves versus have-nots." And so, from a political point of view, not just the legal point of view of Sigma, but from a political point of view, that all of it needs to come together. Because if my clients are going to be asked to accept the concept of an allocation structure that strips water rights, and I think is legally attackable, their position becomes, "Okay, everybody needs to be at the table on the larger conversation, including how are we going to pay for replenishment, so we're all okay collectively." And so, from a political point of view, I'm very concerned about the notion of an allocation plan being segregated from the larger groundwater sustainability plan and the work that's associated with that, because that's going to take a lot of conversation and compromise as well. And fundamentally, until we all know what that delta is between right now and sustainable, whatever that is, until we all know what that delta is, we don't know what the pain is. And we don't, until we know what the pain is, we don't know how everybody comes to the party and how that delta gets addressed. So, I think that's frankly the good part of Sigma. There are issues with it I don't agree with, but I think that's the good part of it, is it says, "You put it all together at one time, and that's the compromise that becomes a grand compromise that then allows people to say, 'Okay, even though I think that this is legally deficient or legally insufficient, or it's affecting my water rights, I'm going to live with it because we're all on the boat, and we've all made the grand compromise.'" But if you do it ahead of time, that then doesn't happen. And I have to tell you fundamentally, if this kind of plan were to happen before part of a GSP with all the tools in the toolbox, our analysis, and it's not just mine, it's Downey Brands as well, is that it's legally attackable. It's unsustainable. In lawyer language, it would be arbitrary and capricious. And it forces the twenty-five or thirty percent of acreage that is in our group, it forces us to a lawsuit because legally, we have to file the lawsuit in the context of the threat of that kind of ordinance. We don't want to do that, really honest. People can say I'm a fire thrower. Jeff kids me from time to time about that. But the truth is, we don't want to. My group doesn't want to do that. We want to bring it together in the collective good conversation. So, in terms of where we go from here, we believe that there are fundamental issues or problems with LPUG. If they want to stay together, that's fine. They have a voice. I've asked Jeff to invite my group to the conversation, and as he always is, he's very open to that, and I'm sure we'll be having those conversations. And my people will continue to be involved in LPUG. But staff now should be taking the lead as a GSP is developed and the allocation proposal, and some of the bones are very good, becomes part of that conversation, and it comes together ultimately in a package. And I think the timeframe that everybody's hoping for is about a year. So, given that the basin's not in overdraft, I don't think that's an unreasonable place for us to be, as maybe distinguished from other basins. So, we would urge that you accept the LPUG plan, you thank LPUG, and I certainly would thank them to the extent they want to stay involved, and Cuyahoga wants to continue to fund them. That's perfectly fine. We have no objection. My clients, some of whom are even on the voting panel of the LPUG group, will stay engaged. My group will become engaged. We have a hydrologist. We're involved deeply in this process. And then, we work with your good staff as we bring all the pieces together. And that's how we think your board should move forward. And I apologize for taking so long, and thank you, Chair West, for cutting me to slack on time.
Any questions, Mr. Golden Ring, before? Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, do you have a comment?
Very briefly, there were some motivations put to Cuyahoga as to why we've paid for Brian to be the facilitator of the allocation committee, and we have had LPUG meetings at our office, and I'd like to just clear that up. Cuyahoga has a big aquifer storage and recovery project in the Las Poses Basin, and it's a very, very important supply if we ever get cut off from imported water. And we want to preserve our right to do that, and we've been working with the pumpers to be able to preserve our right to do that. It is in our interest to have cooperative basin management in Las Poses. And we've talked with our board many times over the years because we have been paying for this. You know, is it worth doing, and why are we doing it? We want the cooperative basin management because it serves our interest to not get into litigation and have the costs and the labor required associated with litigation. So, it was our goal to facilitate a cooperative process to avoid that. We'll see if we've been successful, but that was the attempt. I know that LPUG made a great deal of outreach early on in the allocation process, sending cards to all the people. GMA helped us send cards to everyone more than once, and it was an attempt to have a cooperative process. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Esper Peterson, and my sons and I farm approximately a thousand acres out in the Las Poses Valley. I'm here today to talk about the proposed groundwater sustainability plan that LPUG has approved and sent to you for your consideration today. I have attended these LPUG meetings since approximately 2009. I have not made every meeting, but I have made enough meetings to qualify to be a voting member of the LPUG panel. There was a vote last week to approve the plan and send it to the FCGMA. The vote was eight to one. I was the one objecting. The plan is truly flawed for many reasons. There are so many cooks in the soup and varying interests and untruths and lack of honesty that I can only liken it to the good old boy, I can only liken it to a good old boy plan style similar to a Chicago backroom deal. The plan is an illegal taking of overlying land, of overlying landowner water rights and giving them to the individual pumpers and municipal pumpers. By admission, Brian Bondi, by admission of Brian Bondi, there is no material overdraft of water in the east and west Las Poses Basin. When I asked Brian at one of the LPUG meetings, "If you took all the acreage that is irrigated in the Las Poses Basin and divided it out by the amount of water that is pumped, it comes to approximately 2.3 acre feet," he said. The proposal in front of you now calls for a menagerie of reductions down to a level, eventually, of 1.3 acre feet. There is approximately, that is approximately a cut of fifty percent of the water usage from the basin, which by their own admission now are not in overdraft. When asked, Brian also admitted that 1.3 acre feet of irrigation water is not enough to grow my avocados. But he also said that I could buy additional water. That's a little bit like the present-day computer hackers that can steal your information from your computer, lock you out, and then sell it back to you. There is no reasonable and prudent-thinking person in this room that can for one second believe that if the FCGMA adopts this plan and implements it, there will not be a huge outcry and, I assume, copious amounts of litigation. There is not one single farmer or rancher in the Las Poses Basin that does not want to reasonably and prudently manage the water in the basin. I also believe that there is not one single rancher or farmer in that basin that will put up with having his water rights illegally expropriated. The FCGMA should stop this dog and pony show right now and come with a plan that is like Caesar's wife above suspicion. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Chairman West, members of the board. My name is Dan Rosenthal. I'm a grower in the Las Poses Valley. The comment was made that there was substantial outreach over a long period of time, but I have to tell you that since my active involvement in this process over the last few months, I've come to the realization that the parties that are not at the table are the landowners. The landowners are not the mutuals. And I've talked to so many landowners who are unaware of this process, or if they're aware of this process, they're only superficially aware of it and not aware of the very deep impact it will have on their livelihoods and their lives and the financial impact on the entire valley. Ventura County itself has a fairly narrow economic base, and agriculture is a huge part of it. And the Las Poses Valley is a very unusual, very rich, and very old agricultural community. And this plan, in effect, disregards all of that history and all the efforts that we as growers have put in to be good stewards of the land and make it productive. I don't understand why the owners had not been invited to the table first, especially since they own the water rights. And they've owned the water rights for over a hundred years or more. So, I think this plan needs to be revisited from scratch. The water rights have to be respected to the landowners themselves. Otherwise, this process is going to be stalled and eventually end up in the courts, which, as Mr. Golden Ring said, is not our desire, but it's certainly a definite possibility. as Mr. Goldenring said, is not our desire, but it's certainly a definite possibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sam McIntyre, and I represent the Sunshine Ranch, which is 1,100 acres in the Somus area, planted both avocados, lemons, and other crops, mostly tree crops. The reason for my wanting to speak directly about this is I feel strongly that sooner or later, we're going to have a problem in the La Sposas community of underground water available for pumping. They can't continue to put more straws into it and continue to enlarge the acreage and not utilize what existing water we have available right now. I feel strongly that the L-PUG group should stay together and work with the community and with the other growers. And I realize where some of these growers are coming from. But the ranch that we represent represents a lot of individuals that have brought their money together to buy, to purchase that ranch, and they're looking forward to 52 years or more of operation. You know, we would like to see this whole thing operated as an entity of all the growers. We all have our own ideas, but we need to come together because that water isn't going to be there forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Jurgen Gramco. I am just going to speak for myself as a grower, not for the OPV landowner group. There was a slide that showed three, three current levels of water use, and then had slopes down to the, the minimum where everybody ends up. So, the guy, there's one guy using a lot of water has a very steep slope. One guy using moderate amount of water has a less steep slope, and one that's using little water has essentially no slope. We've been struggling with this in the OPV group because that is, doesn't really share the pain. It puts a lot of load on the high water user. And the perception that the high water user is necessarily an inefficient water user isn't so. Everybody has been focusing on water for quite a while. There are simply crops that use more water than other crops. So, while it feels egalitarian to everybody to end up at the same place, it doesn't share the cost and the pain of getting there. So, I'm not suggesting that this plan is entirely wrong. I know there's been a lot of work that went into it, and we're struggling with the same issue in Oxnard, and we're trying to find a different solution. But my point is that this is a very, very sticky issue.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? Yes?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the GMA Board. My name is John Grether. I'm a grower and a landowner in the west La Sposas. I've been involved with the L-PUG group since its inception. I serve on the allocation committee. And it's been a lot of work. I think those who've attended the meetings would appreciate even more so the countless hours we've put in. It's been mentioned, but I think it needs to be repeated, that those meetings were all public, and anyone who wanted to participate could participate. We've made changes to the white paper in the last month or so because we did get feedback. I think that the issue of water rights is very complicated. It's a very, very significant legal question throughout the state of California. It's not probably appropriate for us at this meeting to try to resolve them. There was never an attempt made by anyone on the L-PUG panel to strip water rights. I think that's a very strong statement to make because that was never an attempt made by any one of us at any time. We've attempted to try to come up with a fair allocation system should replenishment projects not deliver the water that's necessary, as Mr. McIntyre has mentioned, to protect the sustainability of the aquifer for the longer term. It is not an attempt to strip water rights in the next year or the next year after that. As was mentioned, it's a 20-year process, and it allows time for replenishment projects to come online. I don't believe that we need to resolve legal questions at the meeting today. I think it should be, it should be pointed out, however, that the GMA historically has, as was mentioned, managed water allocations at the wellhead. We emulated that because that's the administrative system that the GMA has used. There was nothing further that, than that. If the charge is that the GMA, or that, excuse me, the L-PUG group has attempted to strip water rights, what it's really saying is that the GMA all along has stripped water rights. And I don't believe that that legal challenge was ever made. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Lynn Jensen with Ventura County Colab, and I guess I have more questions than I do answers today. And I guess my biggest question is whether the allocation plan is fully baked and ready, you know, to be approved as it is. And I don't understand why we would need to rush it at this point. I think there needs to be more analysis of whether the water should run with the land or the wells. I know that the OPV group is struggling with that, and I think there needs to be kind of a consensus before the GMA goes down any particular path. And in terms of the sustainable yield, experience shows in the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley basins that the 3D models were really worth waiting for. There was a lot of information that came out of those for the sustainable yield calculations down the road. And the La Sposas Valley really hasn't had that 3D analysis yet. It hasn't come out. And especially the sustainable yield, we think, needs to be accepted by the full tag and all of the consultants before it's referenced in any ordinance. So, I know that, that the group is, the staff is going to be working on an ordinance or talking about that, but we don't think that there should be numbers that go in there until they're accepted by the tag. And also, the carryforward idea, I know there's been concern from the GMA about that issue. And again, it's not fully baked. The OPA group has just been looking at it and analyzing it, and I think that the La Sposas group is interested in it. And again, needs to be fully baked before you go on to the next step of writing the ordinance. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Let me just make a few observations, if I may, first with respect to, I guess, the general subject, general concept of allocations as being inconsistent with water rights. I think that's superficially true, but I don't think in the, in the actual implementation or the design of an allocation system, they are inherently inconsistent with water rights, particularly, particularly in the implementation. But that's something that will have to be developed as we move down the line. In addition, with respect to, I see a difference between developing a plan to the extent that it might be needed and implementing one. I appreciate that we don't have sustainability numbers, sustainable yield numbers yet. And indeed, I'd be happy to agree, if the data shows it, that the basins aren't in overdraft, which might moot the need, at least in the short term, for a, an allocation plan. But that's not a reason to stop working on an allocation plan just in case the data is otherwise. And the, and the fact that there are unanswered questions and unresolved issues is probably a good indication to keep working, whether it's within the structure of trying to develop an ordinance or trying to develop the information necessary to resolve the issues, you know, working with all of the interested parties to kind of resolve some of the issues that have been raised. You know, personally, I, as far as carryforwards are concerned, I'd like to, I'd like to hear more information on options. You know, I recall well the five-year rolling average that L-PUG discussed and the annual true-up system or whatever, whatever, I don't know how you, what you'd refer to it as, Jurgen, but the concept that OPV has been discussing, and how either of those and any other options square with the water code. You know, what, not only what options are there conceptually and technically, but what options do we have legally? As far as the pumping allocation issues go, I tend to agree with Director Bennett. Frankly, that seems to me to be more of a mutual problem and not a GMA problem. And, and if I have one abiding principle, it's never make anybody else's problems my problem. And I'm not convinced that we need to directly wade into that. I appreciate some of the finer points that Mr. Goldenring brought out, but I do think that it's possible to craft solutions to those to the extent that they occur. And, and that's something that, you know, preemptively, we should probably look at. You know, particularly if the, rather than, to make sure that in an ordinance or in whatever plan is structured, that, you know, if there is a landowner that separates from mutual, that the mutual gets debited for the allocation that goes with the landowner so we don't have anybody double dipping. That would seem to be a fairly easy matter to fix. But how and when, you know, how and when an individual can separate from a mutual and who controls that, the mutual or the landowner? I think that's between the mutual and the landowner, and the allocation, the recommendation that was in the proposal, I think, addresses, addresses that at least conceptually. The, as far as the, the notion about respecting water rights, couldn't agree more. I couldn't agree more. I think that, that Sigma requires that. I think that's, that's something that everybody on this board is, is interested in. Nobody wants to see those violated or develop a plan that's going to strip anybody of water rights. You know, however, you know, I also agree that this is a, this is a cooperative process. You know, we're all in this together, whether it's allocation plans, replenishment fees, you know, or projects. You know, I think we need to do everything we can in order to marshal the data, make sure the data is reliable, and then work together to reduce any existing delta, if there is one, between the demand and the sustainable yield. And ultimately, you know, I think that's part of what the, that's entirely what the GSP will, you know, will address. But I think we do need to move forward on an allocation plan, in the development of an allocation plan, just the, just in case we wind up with that delta and have to accommodate it.
I agree. Sorry. Mr. Chair, I agree with you, but I think that we need to, while we're doing that, we need to work on the unresolved issues because I think the unresolved issues could create some problems. Significant problems.
So, I think certainly we first need to, to give a lot of kudos to L-PUG and all the hard work they've done through all this, through many years, especially the allocation committee. I think the white paper is, is outstanding, given what, you know, the information you have currently. It makes a lot of sense to me, and it, and it seems very reasonable. But I think instituting an allocation plan at this point is, is very premature. Starting, working on a new ordinance is premature. I think sticking currently with the emergency ordinance E is, is fine. It seems to be working. And, and then, I think it was Mr. Goldenring mentioned that the growers that he's involved with are, are happy to continue working with, with the curtain ordinance. But what I think more we need to go first is really just do the, the sustainable yield analysis. I think that's, that's where everything is based on. That's where I think we need to focus our energy and, as the GSP is, is written. I mean, I'm certainly not, no one knows, I think, for sure if there's an overdraft or, or in each of the different areas. So, it's without that, that detailed analysis, not just looking at groundwater pumping, but other surface waters and other environmental uses, that things that all have to look at as, as a whole, as a continued process. Those sustainable yield processes, or the sustainable yield numbers is where to start. And then, way before you talk about any allocations, so you have to, have to know how much wire you have. And maybe there, doesn't need to be any, any allocation reductions, but. Mike, I think you're talking about two different things. Because in development of a plan is different than implementing a plan. And by and large, I think it's, you're correct, that before implementing a plan that requires any reduction in pumping, you'd want to have that sustainable yield analysis done. But I don't think that prevents you from developing a plan now, particularly if the plan, you know, as, as described by Mr. Bondi, if the plan requires or conceives of no short-term reduction in pumping until those sustainable yield numbers, you know, are determined so you can see what that, what that delta is, if it exists. But I think, I think we can proceed, we can give staff instructions to proceed to try to develop the plan, because that doesn't have anything to do with implementation. But what I, what I personally would not want to see happen is we, we work our way through these unresolved issues where we're, we're now in December, and now we're going to start developing the plan. You know, I think we can get a head start on that now, develop it while we're determining whether it gets implemented and how it gets implemented. So, you're saying that L-PUG has done all they can do. We're going to accept their white paper, and then the allocation plan from here on out is going to be done by staff, developed by staff? Not alone, yes, not alone, but I'd expect, you know, I would think in terms of, if I had to give direction to staff, it would be to work with L-PUG, to work with the Water Rights Coalition, to smooth the rough edges, to resolve those issues, so that ultimately what comes back, you know, in the form of an ordinance is something that either has consensus or is the best work product that we can produce. I'd agree with that. Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a quick comment. First and foremost, I'm very appreciative of everybody's comments, whether they're in conflict with some of their contemporaries or not. I think that just shows the level of investment people have made personally into this process, and that's the entire point. Although we may be far apart, I do see the process coming to a point where we are going to reach consensus. There's a lot of motivated people to get to that point, and I think that's very encouraging. That said, it's, it's a puzzle still. At least many of the pieces are now known, and it's a function of putting them together, and that will seem to accelerate at the last minute. So, I personally am encouraged by that. I'm looking forward to a resolution on a number of issues, and I think that we do need to continue to march forward, and this is the moment to rest on that. So, I tend to agree with Director West here, and I'm glad that everyone's voices are being heard. Thank you.
Our, I guess, task, we're not, we're not here to vote on anything or approve anything today. It's simply to give direction to staff. I think we've done that. Jeff, have you heard what you need to do to get your work done?
I think we have. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, we do have three board members who've been working on this at the board level for a while. Is there a way for them to watch the, excuse me, the, the video of our meeting, or listen to the tape, or whatever they're going, they would do, and then in some public way make comments because they... comments because they, their comments need to be made publicly to the staff to give direction?
I think that'd be easy to accommodate with Supervisor Bennett and with Director Borchard. Might be difficult for Director Aronio to get reception in Vietnam, but he'll be back eventually. And sure, in terms of board member comments at the beginning of the next meeting or the meeting after that, I'm sure we could hear the same.
Okay.
That concludes our business for today. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're adjourned.
I didn't know where Robert was.